I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our swearing-in ceremony for our new council members, and the Honorable Timothy Connors was to be here. I don't believe he's here. He's hiding somewhere. So we'll go ahead then and have our city clerk, Diane Hill, perform the swearing-in ceremony. We have Mr. Gerbahn, Mr. Marl, and Mr. Rhodes.
I think he's coming right now, Diane. Unless there's someone else wandering the halls in a row?
Grim Reaper.
Here come the judge.
How are you all?
Good.
We're well, thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerbahn?
Yes.
Would you like to come down here?
Yes, I will.
I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of councilmember?
Of the office of councilmember.
For a two-year term?
For a two-year term.
Beginning January 3, 2011?
Beginning January 3, 2011.
In and for the city of Celine?
In and for the city of Celine.
County of Washtenaw?
County of Washtenaw.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities. Congratulations. We have Mr. Rhodes.
Pleasure to meet you this way.
Do you raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of councilmember?
Of the office of councilmember.
For a two-year term?
For a two-year term.
Beginning January 3?
Beginning January 3?
2011.
2011.
In and for the city of Celine?
In and for the city of Celine.
County of Washtenaw?
County of Washtenaw.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Marl. Good evening, Mr. Marl.
Good evening, Judge. I'm all right, sir.
Could you raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear?
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councilperson?
Say that one more time, Judge. I apologize.
Of the office of councilmember?
Of the office of councilmember.
For a two-year term?
For a two-year term.
Beginning January 3, 2011?
Beginning January 3, 2011.
In and for the city of Celine?
In and for the city of Celine.
County of Washtenaw?
County of Washtenaw.
State of Michigan?
State of Michigan.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities, sir. Thank you.
Was all three with you?
Yes, you did all three, but I wanted to congratulate the others. Hard work, huh?
Yeah.
Keep it up.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Keep it up.
Thanks.
These are tough times.
It's good to see you.
It's you.
It's already done. Diane, you don't need to sign anything?
Nope, it's all done.
Back to you?
Yep, thank you.
Who said they're going back for it, right?
I will.
Thank you, Judge Connors. We have some changes and additions to our agenda this evening. In the consent agenda, under the item C-dash bills, note that there are blanks. We need to fill those blanks in. The payment of bills consisting of 76 payees and in the amount of $113,968.36. Also, in the consent agenda, on item C-1105, we will confirm Mayor Driscoll's citizen appointments to boards and commissions for 2011 as amended. On your desk should be an amended copy of the citizen appointments. Are there any other additions or changes to the agenda? In the discussion section, City Manager Campbell will address the ice rink rules, which council approved at our last meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
It's moved.
Seconded.
Moved, Mr. Law. Seconded, Mr. Gerbahn. All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Mayor, broke down. Is there one other item that should be noted, that the State of the City message is not presented this evening?
I am going to address that next.
Would that be part of the amended agenda, though?
If you think so, then yes, it is. I shall agree to that.
It seems like it should. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor is out of town. She regrets she cannot be with us today. She asked that I inform you that she will deliver the State of the City message at our next regular meeting on January 24. I believe we still need to vote on the motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Mayor Driscoll, being out of town, we will entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
Move to excuse the absence of Gretchen Driscoll.
Second.
Moved Marl. Seconded, Terhar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Move on then to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council at this time? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and adopt as amended?
We have a motion to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved Rhodes. Seconded, Gerbahn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carried. Let's move on to unfinished business. We have one item, item number 08-38, Clean Michigan Initiative Grant, Mill Pond Park, changes to grant. There's a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 29, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordice and the December 22, 2010 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract amendment for the Mill Pond Park Waterfront Development Project between the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment in the city of Celine, modifying the project's scope, eliminating the proposed rain garden, and reducing the proposed 2,000 feet of a six-foot paved pathway to 1,200 feet of a 10-foot pathway, and to change the contract period, extending the end date to January 27, 2012. Do we have a motion?
Move to authorize.
Second?
Support.
Moved Terhar. Seconded, Rhodes. Discussion. Mr. Fordice, can you speak to this motion?
The scope was originally proposed in the grant application when we got into preliminary design and did a cost estimate. That cost estimate greatly exceeded the amount of the grant and match. So I began discussions with DNRE, which may have been the DEQ at the time and might be back to the DEQ now, I'm not sure, about changing the scope and extending the schedule. I met with them. We walked the site, reviewed the plans that we have to date, and agreed on these -- they were amenable to these two reductions. And also discussed that after bidding, we may need to further reduce the scope because even with these two significant changes, the preliminary cost estimate still exceeds the amount of money we have in the grant. So there's -- you might notice a few conflicting numbers in here on the original length of the pathway. The grant application included approximately 2,000 feet of six-foot wide pathway. After we laid out the pathway and kind of snaked through the park and went to different interesting locations, the curves and the estimated nature of the original length turned into 2,700 feet, which is another reason that the cost had increased. Between the time of the submittal of this grant application and now, we have adopted the non-motorized transportation plan, which calls for 10-foot wide pathways outside of the right of way. So that's an additional change that's proposed at this time, increasing from the original six-foot to a 10-foot wide pathway to comply with that recently adopted plan and provide, you know, the first major section of the non-motorized network. Other than that, the other elements, stabilizing the banks around the Bowley Bridge and stabilizing that bridge, improvements to the dog park, the pathway, and the observation pier, those are all still in the scope.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Fordice, two things. One is, could you verbally describe generally where the remaining path will be in the park?
Yeah.
And a second, I'll just throw the second out right away, and that is, if the next round of estimates still comes into high, have you -- what elements do you anticipate having to change again?
Okay. The pathway, as I'm proposing it here, extends from the parking lot, the main parking lot at Mill Pond, and then goes kind of roughly adjacent to the parking loop, closer to the -- and then extending down toward the boat launch area. And then it connects to the existing bridge over the water plant discharge structure. And then from there, it basically parallels the shoreline, going down along the Mill Pond to a certain point, and then it angles back near the rock and goes to the entrance to the dog park. And that's where it would end at this time. The original length extended from that and then went around the dog park, back to the shore, and further on down the Mill Pond to the very small trail that leads up to the hospital campus.
Is there any difficulty incorporating that more narrow bridge over the water treatment plant facility with a 10-foot wide path up there, sir?
Not in terms of construction. In terms of, you know, hopeful, eventually there'll be a lot of traffic on this, and we might need to improve that section there or go around it somehow. But at this time, I don't think it'll be a traffic flow problem, and it won't be a construction problem. And, I'm sorry, the second question was?
What areas might you have to change?
Yeah, I think the next thing that would be eliminated most likely would be the observation pier. So keep the pathway, keep the shoreline improvements, the Bowley Bridge, and the, you know, controlling the erosion in that area.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Law? On the observation pier, Mr. Fordice, I just wondered why it's still in there. I don't -- I'm not necessarily saying it shouldn't be. I'm just curious, because you said that would be the next thing to go. I'm just curious as to why it's still in there, because in my way of thinking, I think the pathway and other things, improvements to the dog park, are more important if you had a priority list, at least if I did. And would it enhance the chances of getting it approved or getting the grant if we did take something else out like that?
The -- when I reviewed these items with the DNR, you know, the ones that we eliminated, those seemed to be the most obvious ones, because we have, with this length of pathway, there's an endpoint to it. You know, it ends at the dog park. If we eliminated the observation pier and took that money and put it into pathway, you know, we'd probably get to the other end of the dog park. So at this point, we're trying to get as many different elements in there as possible, and there's the hope that as we refine the design, there's a few expensive items in there right now in terms of the bridge stabilization, that I think we're going to be able to design those out and stabilize the bridge with a less expensive construction technique. And so if we can reduce those costs, then we'll still be able to afford the observation pier. But basically, I'm trying to leave as many options open at this point, you know, with the understanding with council and with DNR that there may be cuts after we do the final design and do the bidding. But maybe we'll get lucky, and between designing some costs out and getting a good bid, we might be able to afford all the remaining elements.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor then to authorize the execution of the contract amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion is carried. Okay, now, at this point, let us consider new business. Our first item is 11-06, which is Mayor Driscoll's appointment of this year's mayor pro temp. The chair moves that Councilmember Brian Marl serve as mayor pro temp for the year 2011. Do we have a second? Moved Ivy. Seconded, Rhodes. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and the chair then will yield the floor to Mr. Marl.
Better than the state.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy, and thank you for your leadership as mayor pro temp during the 2010 calendar year. It's much appreciated. Okay, my friends, moving on to new business, item 11-07, Use of Public Ways 5K Race, Celine Winterfest 2011. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of an application for the use of public ways submitted by the Fifth Corner for a 5K race to be held on January 29, 2011 in conjunction with the 2011 Winterfest, to acknowledge receipt of the December 27, 2010 memo from Director of Public Works Fordice, the December 28, 2010 memo from Chief of Police Button, and the December 28, 2010 memo from Fire Chief Heft, and to authorize or not authorize the 5K race to be held on January 29, 2011, utilizing city streets and sidewalks conditioned to the following. One, the traffic engineer shall issue the necessary temporary traffic control orders for the closing of any streets as needed. Two, that the organizers of the event shall be responsible for the placing and removing of signs, barricades, cones for the events -- for the event, excuse me. And three, that the Fifth Corner shall provide the city with a certificate of insurance, subject to approval by the city attorney, with the city as the endorsed additional insuring party for this event. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and authorize.
Second?
Moved Gerbahn. Seconded, Ivy. To acknowledge receipt and authorize. Mr. Trapp, would you like to go over your memo or make any comments here this evening?
Good evening. Winterfest deal continues to be a fluid event, including this 5K race, and what we did is try to map out a route that would not hinder folks coming into Celine either from the east or from the south. Hence, we took away the Willis Road portion of this race. And South Ann Arbor Street, they will be utilizing the sidewalk, and we figure after they've run four kilometers, that the group will be spread out and will be able to utilize the sidewalk and turn into the parking lot at the corner there where the Fifth -- the Fifth Corner is, into that parking lot for the finish line. We will need a certain amount of police reserves and cadets for the various intersections, as well as some barricades, but the gist of it will be volunteers from the Fifth Corner that will man the intersections and hopefully allow this race to proceed without any problems as we have done for Summerfest. I don't know if anyone has any questions about the layout of the race, but I think this is the 29th version of it. So anyways, we tried to do our best to make it as compact and as accessible for the runners and for the community as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trapp. Are there any questions for Downtown Development Director Trapp? Mr. Rhodes?
Not questions, but a little more background information. The youth at the teen center had proposed to have a 5K fun run walk, and so this is not a competitive timed race that earns points for runners. And so we anticipate that the movement of the participants will be a bit slower and perhaps less hectic than it was at Summerfest, for instance. Anyway, the youth had wanted to have this in February, and then when I made them aware of the Winterfest, they asked if they could move it to that event with the idea that it would bring some additional people into the city of Celine. And then in the meeting with the Winterfest group, it was requested that the time -- start time of the race be changed from the nine -- proposed 9:00 AM to 9:30, and that the start location of the race also be changed in order to have it start uptown, close to the opening ceremonies that would go on. And so it is anticipated that this activity will bring additional people to the downtown area for the opening ceremony event, and maybe some of those other folks might cheer off the runners and get them going better. So it's been a joint effort between the two groups, and as Art mentioned, the Fifth Corner will be providing a large contingent of volunteers, since it is kind of a twisty turning route on city streets. So we'll have a fair number of folks out there to make sure that the participants stay on the right path. So we're praying for weather. Art needs snow on the ground for the snowman building thing, but you know, if it could be like it was today with the sun shining and about 30 degrees, it'd be great. That's all we did.
Just a comment on the snowman building championship of the free world. I contacted Zeeland, Sioux St. Marie, and St. Clair this morning. Sioux St. Marie has four inches of old snow that is declining rapidly. Zeeland and St. Clair have none. We have none. There is a pile out there in front of City Hall is the most snow that I've seen around the area. So I mentioned that we couldn't even build a four-inch snowman, not alone a four-foot one. We'll see what happens, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Law, did you have a comment or question? Just to piggyback on Mr. Rhodes' comments, just to thank the organizers of the run to -- for being flexible and willing to accommodate what the Winterfest folks had planned as far as the opening ceremonies and everything that goes into that. And as Mr. Rhodes said, hopefully it will bring many more people downtown and sort of add to the whole atmosphere that we hope we'll have at Winterfest with lots of snow. Thank you, Mr. Law. Any comments from the right side of the dais?
Just wanted -- the reason why I moved it was because I think you need additional activities to support, especially when Winterfest can be shaky. Even the ice festivals have those kind of concerns when it warms up, so I think it's a good way to bring additional people in.
Thank you, Mr. Gerbahn. Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Any additional comments? Hearing none, I'll move the motion. All those in favor -- or I'll call the question, excuse me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 11-08, School Election Coordination Agreement. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of a December 28, 2010 memo from City Clerk Hill and to authorize or not authorize the clerk to execute the school election coordination agreement with Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County Community College, and Washtenaw Intermediate School District to be finalized on January 20, 2011 on behalf of the city for the 2011-2012 elections.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes to authorize and seconded by Mr. Law. City Clerk Hill, would you like to go over?
Sure.
Your application?
Um...
Memorandum, rather?
Sure. In 2005, the election legislation went into effect requiring that there were four election dates that could be utilized, and with that legislation, each school district was required to have an election coordination agreement with all the units of municipal units of government, and those agreements set forth responsibilities. The last three agreements are typically the same as the ones that are proposed for this year. Essentially, the local units of government take care of all the elections for the school districts, and there's just -- these agreements outline what those duties are. There's been no changes, so this is the next agreement for the next two years.
Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Clerk Hill. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business, item 11-09, this is a purchase offer portion of the Service Center property at 600 North Maple Road. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 29, 2010 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne and to approve or not approve the sale of 6.69 acre portion of the 10.2 acre parcel of the property at 600 North Maple Road, formerly 6705 North Maple Road, to Senior Care Properties LLC for the purchase price of $545,000, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the real estate purchase agreement dated 12/27/2010 and all other documents required to complete the sale with Senior Care Properties LLC after review and approval by the city attorney. after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and to authorize.
Moved Ivy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded Tahar. Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne, would you be able and willing to go over the memorandum which was enclosed in our packet? Maybe you could also touch on the email that you sent out this morning.
Okay. By the way, Shirley Woodruff and Tom Higgins are here representing the buyer. This service, the old Service Center has a new address of six hundred North Maple Road. Had a building, had our Public Works there, building was torn down. There are a total of three assessors parcels that make up ten point two acres, and in addition to the ten point two acres, there's a seventy-five foot by seventy-five foot parcel of land on which there's a tower. So in discussing a elder housing facility with the purchaser, city manager, mayor, and myself, Gary Roble, and Attorney Grossman, had back and forth discussions about what to sell, what was available, and what the buyer wanted. From the city's point of view, there was an interest in retaining access to the tower because it's money-producing tower, and we, by right, we need to provide access to the tower. Secondly, there was a desire to maintain access to rail, both for freight and possible passenger light rail in the future. And Mayor Driscoll pointed out that if there was light rail, she would like to retain enough for a significant number of parking spots. And the land that we are keeping next to the rail is sufficient for double-wide parking on the south, the parcel on the north, and about a hundred-plus parking spots on that side. And the parcel on the north would have slightly fewer parking spots or could be used for freight. So the purchaser wanted to do a two-phase development and purchase the piece closest to Maple Road and purchase the back piece later. Our city engineer and city attorney pointed out that in Celine, you can't have flag parcels that don't have frontage. You must develop a parcel that has frontage, develop it as one parcel. So at the, we had a work session to review this, city council did, there were many questions, and some of the questions were technical and some had to do with wanting to convey this as one piece rather than two pieces. After that work session, Gary Roble, myself, city manager and city attorney, and went through the list of questions, and we were able to frame the responses to the purchaser and ask them to satisfy each and every one of them. They had to look at their market study to see whether this would be feasible to be able to carry the extra land during the time that they're just doing phase one, and they responded that they would do it. So we have before us a purchase agreement for five hundred forty-five thousand dollars. That's about eighty-one thousand four hundred per acre. We have a development incentive of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which are Tifa funds. We have a projected twelve point five million dollar project, which we foresee will bring the general fund about sixty-one thousand dollars each and every year as new taxes. And the Tifa development incentive will be recovered by Tifa within a couple of years, and then Tifa will be in the positive in its tax increment capture. The purchasers agreed to every condition that the city put out there. We will retain forty-five feet of frontage on Maple Road, which opens up to sixty-six feet on the southerly side of the rail. It is, it meets our listing price, it slightly exceeds it, and I think senior housing is needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there any questions for Finance Director Burgoyne?
No.
No questions? I guess at this time, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rhodes.
I think you're getting to what I was going to say, for the benefit of the people who are going to watch this later, it would be good to have the purchasers come up and talk about what they're going to do. Then having said that, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Burgoyne and the representatives from the purchaser's office on reaching agreement here on these points.
Any other questions for Mr. Burgoyne? Or any questions, I guess? Okay, seeing none, I would encourage and invite the representatives from Senior Care LLC to come forward, maybe talk to us a little bit about what they're proposing tonight, and maybe bring the public that's in the audience this evening and who will be watching at home up to snuff with what you're going to be recommending.
Thank you. Tom Higgins from Reinders Incorporated and Senior Care Properties LLC. It's been a, an enjoyable, I guess, negotiation with the city. It's been quite a bit of back and forth. We had good conversations with Lee and Gary and Todd especially have been very helpful in this, and Alan, he gave us a lot of help in putting this all together. And the negotiations, we did have to do a little bit of a gulp in taking down the whole piece, but in the way it was presented, we have looked at it, and we think we can carry that extra land for that period of time. So it's a stretch on both of our parts. I think you got what you needed, and we got what we needed, so I think it was a good negotiation for both of us, and it'll work out fine. We're proposing to build a hundred units of assisted living in both one-bedroom and studio units in two phases. The unit sizes will be, will range from two hundred and twenty-four square feet to five hundred seventy-six square feet. The types of care, each individual will be moving in there with a, an assessment, and the assessments are done on a regular basis, and there is a care component that goes along with that. It's not a full skilled nursing, it's short of that, it is assisted living, and we've done a number of these throughout the state. The types of services that are available is there are assistance with activities of daily living. There's a full commercial kitchen, serving three meals a day plus snacks, individually-controlled heating and air conditioning, complete housekeeping and laundry services, a beauty salon and barber shop, emergency poles in each unit, oversized thermostat plugs and switches at appropriate heights, full-time activities director for planned activities and wellness activities, and then a state-of-the-art memory care design of our buildings. We tweak the building each time we build a new one of these, and we've built a number of these throughout the state. There's a secured area for the memory care for resident safety, there's an outdoor secured area, neighborhood configuration to improve the social interaction of the caregivers and access to the people who live there. And they're color-coded, which is sort of an interesting concept. It helps relieve confusion, lets folks that have some memory problems feel comfortable about where they are. And then there's in-neighborhood dining areas for individualized care within the memory care. Cost will be the twelve and a half million dollars when it's completed, and we will be moving forward very quickly. In fact, if this is approved tonight, we expect to be on-site day after tomorrow, probably with our wetland determination to try to determine if there are any areas of problems with that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Higgins? Mr. Law?
I had a question that maybe I should have asked last time, was the survey that you did, or how you carried out to find the needs for the facility, in other words, that what you're going to build is going to be utilized fully. Was that an independent study you did, or was that something you did in-house, or how was that?
We have a market study that we've developed. We worked with a group out of California, Healthcare, HCP is the name, Healthcare Properties. They're the largest healthcare REIT in the United States, and we worked with them a number of years ago and jointly developed a number of properties with them. They had a rather large staff of marketing people on their staff that had developed over a number of years, some PhDs who had developed a demographic analysis that they did of an area. We have been using that ever since then, for the last probably ten years, we've been using that, and of course tweaking it as, as time goes on with the things that we learned. We did that demographic study on this area, and that was actually what brought us here to begin with, is we, we do look at areas throughout the state and the larger region here and target those areas that seem to be appropriate. And it includes the competition in the area. We come down and we do a site visit of all of the competitive units that are in the area to see what is going to be the competition. And so essentially, we did our own internal study. When we get to the point of having our financing people take a look at it, the banks, they require a third-party study, but they require a third-party study that they engage. So we do our own internal study, feel comfortable with it ourselves based on our past experience, and then we get the third-party study when we go to the financing piece. We haven't missed yet.
So that answers my next question. You feel absolutely comfortable that once you build, it will?
Yes, we do.
Be fully utilized, there won't be?
We wouldn't be putting our name on the line if we didn't, so yes, we do. We feel very comfortable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Any other questions for Mr. Higgins? Thank you very much for your presentation. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Are there any other additional comments regarding this motion? Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to emphasize why I strongly support our purchasing, our selling, I should say, this parcel and this development, I think is very important because of the type of development that it is. It's not just another retail store or restaurant, it's, it's an assisted living and memory care facility. And these kind of facilities are indeed critical to an aging population. I was reading that the Alzheimer's Association, which is based in Chicago, I believe, there are over five million people in this country that are currently living with Alzheimer's disease. And a new individual is diagnosed with Alzheimer's every seventy seconds. They estimate that by two thousand and twenty-five, in Michigan, there'll be almost two hundred thousand people that suffer from Alzheimer's or a related dementia. So I think with this new development, we can look to Celine one day as, as a distinguished community, distinguished insofar as it empowers seniors with choices that they may not have in other locations. I urge my colleagues to support this motion, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy. Any additional comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I did want to mention that, you know, we, while we have an excellent facility here in Celine already for assisted living, Brecken Village and the other EVH-provided facilities, based on the demographics of this area, I do believe that additional units will be required in the not-too-distant future, and so I also support this action.
Any other comments? I just want to say, without sounding redundant, and I'll be very brief, when I first received, I believe, an email notification from our city manager that somebody was actively pursuing purchasing this property, I was very excited, especially considering the rather precarious and lean, lackluster economic climate we find ourselves in. And I think in addition to bringing in a substantial amount of revenue through the sale of this property, the tax revenue is also something that I'm actually genuinely excited about. And I think that although there are no perfect developments, this is a good fit for Celine and a good fit for that particular parcel. In addition to that, I wanted to thank Mr. Campbell and Mr. Grossman for their work on this issue, and especially Mr. Burgoyne for all your work on this issue. Lee, I know you worked very hard, and it's greatly appreciated, and I appreciate and value the, the time you put into this development or this purchase agreement, Mr. Burgoyne, and the way you kept us up to date and informed during the various processes of this negotiation. So thank you for that. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will move the question then. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to discussion items, are there any commission or committee reports from council members? Mrs. Tahar?
The Environmental Commission met on Tuesday, December twenty-first. Commission members agreed to research options for downtown recycle bins, and especially in the immediate future, to look into recycling availability for the next downtown event, which will be Winterfest. Other commission work includes the Mill Pond Project, which we voted on tonight, and also commission members anticipated reviewing and setting goals for two thousand and eleven at the January meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other commission or committee reports? Any other reports or announcements that council members would like to make this evening? Hearing none, Mr. Campbell, do you want to speak briefly about the ice rink rules?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Briefly, you may recall council-directed staff at the last council meeting to check with our liability insurance carrier, reference the rules for the rink, specific to allowing hockey sticks and pucks on the ice, and their response, our Metta Brook, our liability insurance carrier's response back was there'd be no increase in coverage or cost of that nature. However, they would recommend designating separate times, just because they feel that with people with hockey sticks and pucks and free skate makes that there's potential for an increase in accidents. But however, having said that, to date, I've not been made aware by staff or anybody else that we've had any issues. So I just, again, in response to direction from council at the last meeting, I bring that to you, not, not as a recommendation that we should do that, because if, I guess, another thing I think about, if we start trying to designate times, and maybe we will have some, because for the most part, at least as I, what I've observed, as well as talked with other staff and, and as council members that have observed, it seems to be running fairly smoothly to date. So anyway, I just, I bring that information back to you for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Campbell regarding the rules for the ice rink? Mr. Law?
Just that if it isn't broke, don't fix it. Nothing wrong with it.
Any other comments? Very good. Thank you again, Mr. Campbell. Are there any other comments, council members? All right, hearing none, we're moving on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any comments this evening? Seeing none, is there any other business to be brought before Celine City Council this evening? Our next regular meeting is on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven at seven thirty PM. We already excused the absence of Mayor Driscoll, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Moved Gearbaugh.
Second.
Seconded Ivy to adjourn, and what do we got here? Eight twenty- 8:23? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes haven't. The motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.